Good evening. Welcome to Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. I call this meeting to order at five or 6:00 PM. Please stand for the invocation.
Hi, guys. Thank you for this day and the township. Thank you for the people here. Thank you for the people that make this meeting and give us a list of the night and our decisions. Be with those who protect our freedoms and protect our country and our lives. Be with those loved ones that miss them as they're out there in the heat. Amen.
And please call me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Ms. Brown, roll call.
Rosalind McKee.
Here.
Mark Evans.
Here.
Jeff Johnson.
Here.
I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All right, roll call, please.
Rosalind McKee.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeff Johnson.
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes as presented for the January 4th, 2022 organizational and regular meeting?
Yes, I'll move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Rosalind McKee.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeff Johnson.
Yes.
Passed.
All right, that's best. Now, we have public comments. One change you'll notice is we're along five minutes now. So you have a little bit more time if you have something more in depth to speak about. So like two, please come to the stands, say your name and address. Nobody for public comments? Go on, watch it. On place. All right, close.
Do you need Wally's microphone?
Squeal, squeal. You guys hear that there?
Yep.
Oh, it might not be, it might be too close to that mic.
It's not.
I just hear the HVAC. You might have younger ears. They're in the high pitch.
I think it's bad.
Just hearing it.
And I just saw somebody walk in after we called public comments. I just want to make sure if anybody has public comments. Reports, I mistakenly skipped these at the last meeting, so we'll deal with these. The road department, we got the reports from Bubba. Thank you. Zoning report. Mr. Singleton, you provided that last time, correct?
Yes.
Any questions on that, Ms. McKee?
No, no question.
Water and Sewer. There is a joint meeting planned for next trustee meeting between our board and Water and Sewer Board that will happen at the beginning of our meeting on February 1st to discuss the issues in our area with capacity and tips. Fire District, Mr. Johnson.
The meeting that we had scheduled for last week was canceled due to anything we're out sick. We're here for him, so nothing to report there.
All right. Cemetery, as I understand, Mr. Ford did not provide a report before he left. So there's nothing there. Parks and Rock again, Mr. Ford did not provide one at year end. We'll have a new report next month. JUDZ 1 and 2, we had the revenue reports on there. Any questions? And then the JUDS report, same thing, the revenue. Any questions? All right. Old Business, the application submitted by Allenire LLC for properties 9818 Palmer Road, 10156 Palmer Road, 10829 Hazelton Etna Road, and parcel number 01001684-00-000 from Agricultural, AG and General Business District, GB1, to plan mixed-use development, PMUD. All right. This was held over for our board last year, and we'll continue it. As I recall, the public hearing was closed, and there was no really further discussion or questions to the developer at that time. So how we should proceed on this, should we, do we have questions or do we want to let them make any presentation? I know they had a meeting here with some of the residents.
Yeah, I think, I think we've reviewed Rosalind. You guys have questions to the developer? You can ask them their questions. If you guys have time to review it, if you have time to review it, you look through it, if you have questions, ask the developer your question to have them explain things to you. So I'd go from there at this point, and we can have a discussion about that.
Does yours have any questions, Ms. McKee?
Well, I wasn't at the meeting with the residents and just wanted to know how that went, just some kind of feedback. So I think that's important for us to know.
Hi, John Bungartner with Allenire, 302 West Third Street, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45202. Good evening. Yes, thank you again for having us here this evening. You know, we're happy to continue to work with the township. We're glad to see you all here this evening, getting settled in. And we did have a meeting, an informal meeting here last Wednesday. We sent letters out to the adjoining properties around this assemblage of properties with an invitation just to come. We shared some boards that showed the site plan, the proposed site plan, some other sketches that showed potential burming and landscape, you know, burms between buffering, between the adjacent properties, especially to the east where there's the residential properties to the east, and there's some along the west as well. And we showed the setbacks, the distances, the size of the landscape screening, as well as the distance from the proposed buildings to the property line. I think it was an informative meeting. It was, it was a good meeting. We didn't have a planned presentation or formal speech or anything of that sort. It was informal. We had the board set up. People asked questions. I did walk through and show how the proposed mounding, you know, we're proposing to have a mound on a portion of the eastern edge that would be, you know, 10, 10 feet plus high with landscaping on top or a wood fence, whatever the trustees, whatever you all decide as we go through the final development plan. I think that's part of the process. And, you know, I think that was, I think there were a few people that commented that they appreciated being able to see what we're doing. And we certainly weren't trying to win anyone over or sway anybody's decisions one way or the other. It was really for information purposes and to answer any questions. And to help us get a better feel for the concerns, to see anything that we can do as we go through the process here to make additional changes to our plan. And I think from the original submittal, when we first submitted our application, you know, we've increased our buffers, we've increased our setbacks, we've reduced the square footage of the development. So we feel we have made changes to be responsive to the requests and the concerns that we've heard.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm happy to answer any other questions on our application that you have any time.
Yeah, I did have a question. I know it reverts to the access, the access to the property.
Yes.
I believe in the Lincoln County Planning Commission staff report, they recommended a single access aligned with Palmer Road to the, to the west.
To the west, yes, sir.
In the, I saw, in the preliminary plan you had showed me, there was also one on the southern portion of Palmer Road against the residences. Is that still your plan?
So, yes, sir. Mr. Johnson, you're talking about that here in the, what would be the southeast corner of the site. We do show a secondary entrance there into the, into the development. You know, again, we're in the, you know, we're working with ODOT. We'll have to complete and submit a traffic study. That would dictate improvements that need to be made to 310 and Palmer Road based upon those access points. If that were, you know, if that access point were an issue, which it was something that some of the residents questioned last week and we discussed, you know, we're happy to talk about the functionality and the uses of that entrance. We're happy to discuss that.
Would your plan be feasible without that entrance?
Yes.
And do you have any anticipated occupants for this land as far as known uses right now? Or I know there's quite a variety that are placed into the zoning.
We do not have any tenants, prospective tenants that we're negotiating with at this time. The project is a speculative development, most likely to be built in phases. I don't know that we would build both buildings at the same time.
Then as far as a traffic study, do you know if that would take into account the intersection of Palmer and Smoke Road in addition to 310 and Palmer and boarding and Smoke?
Well, I don't know the answer to that. I do believe we received the criteria from ODOT. I think we have received that. And so we will study whatever they've asked us to study. I would say that the certain, you know, vehicular traffic, I guess people that live in the area that work in the facility may come from that area. But I would say that, that due to the proximity of Interstate 70, less than a half mile to the site, I would think that most trucks would want to get right off of 70 and go on their way.
And one of my main concerns is the encroachment of the commercial to the residential, specifically those three houses in the southern portion. I mean, the one house is, I think, 23 foot from the property line.
Yes, sir.
So they're very much impacted. The other ones are also, but they're a fair bit away from the building access to current FedEx and toll chain. I know there's been a lot of concerns about that with noise and all that. The buffers are what I struggle with, and again, the encroachment onto the residential. That and the comp plan calling for the light commercial on 310. So there, those are my concerns at this point. Do you have any other questions?
No, we talked about the buffers, and they would be around what? 10 to 15 on the, on the art mountain?
Yes, and I have a section.
And the trees would sit on top of that.
Yes, I have a section I can show you that demonstrates the view from the backyards of the residential properties, looking at the landscape berm, and it shows a building in, I can show you that section here.
I'm happy to come over there, too.
Can you bring it over?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
John, do you want another basil? We have another one.
Sure. I can hold it. That's okay, Laura.
That way it's available.
Okay.
I've got another one.
You have a nice, you're here for nice ones. Jeff, can you talk to me there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have two sections. Section number two is from down near the southeast corner, but houses the closest to the property line. And so what you see is, this is their house. And this is the property line. We have a 100-foot wide landscape buffer. So from the property line to the curb line of the drive aisle would be a minimum of, minimum of 100 feet. It actually is wider as we go further north on the property, but that buffer gets a little wider. It's a minimum of 100 feet. And so within that area, we will, you know, place our console on, and they can map. We have, you know, a minimum of 10 feet. It, it'll vary, my guess would be between 10, 12, maybe even up to 15 feet.
Yeah.
And you, and you see, we have landscaping on top of that. The species and types of trees and types of plantings are all part of, you know, we would like to discuss this during the final developer plan approval process. If the trustees, if you all decided you would like to see, you know, a privacy fence on top of that mound with the landscaping, we're open to, we like this better than a sound wall.
Yes.
We think it provides a better solution even for sound and certainly from a vision standpoint, and just from a personal, you know, folks living there, going to look at a landscape there rather than a wall.
Right.
And so the second section is just a little further north, basically the same section. So it shows a house. And so someone in the backyard, you're standing there looking up at the mound, the building's way over here, 300 feet away. I forgot to tell you that part. The building's 300 feet away from the property line, a minimum of 300 feet. There, both buildings are a little, a little more than 300. We've left some, a little bit of leeway in there to make sure you get to 300 feet, a little more. This is, you know, this is the scale, so this shows the height of the building, roughly 50 feet tall. And if a person standing in the backyard looking at with the berm there, you wouldn't see the.
Okay, so they would see the, the green around that.
Yes, yes, they would see the landscape.
Now, if you guys decided to go with the fencing you mentioned, would that sit on top of the mound as well?
Yes, we could.
And you would stagger the trees in between that?
Sure, the trees would be on either side of it.
Okay.
I think we would put it on the residence side, whichever, however you all wanted us to do that.
And when you say fencing, are you talking more like a wood fencing or?
I would think it would be a privacy fence.
Privacy fence, okay.
Six foot tall privacy fence on top of the mound, something of that sort.
Okay.
I have a question for you on that, too. Do you know what the effectiveness is that versus a sound wall as far as the sound getting over?
I don't. I don't. I don't have a date on that.
I was wondering if the hill, if it actually will come up, you know, if the sound travels in waves, and even sound walls, they're only effective for so far.
I think with a, with a privacy fence on top of it, if the sound did travel up the hill, it would hit the fence. The landscaping, you know, as the landscaping is there, the trees, vegetation would fill in. And we would propose to make it a pretty opaque collection of trees through there.
Mr. Singleton, do you have any comments or questions?
I think the vegetation would probably be more absorbent to the sound than actually the sound wall would be. And they do have a minimum 100-foot setback, or buffer, and 300-foot setback along that east property line. So with the distance, I would say that would probably be more effective with a sound wall, especially the height you're going to have with it between 10-foot mound plus another probably 10-foot on trees. It's going to be taller than that sound wall you're going to put 300, 330, 340, like.
Do you have a question, Ross?
Yes, thank you.
Do you have any questions? Well, again, like I said, my, my concerns are the proximity of houses, even with the sound wall or the sound berm and that. And also comprehensive plan called for light commercial there. And we're doing PMUD here, which this is essentially M1, even the tax states, you know, look basically with the M1. I'm not sure if it's appropriate use of PMUD. Now, you read the purposes of the objectives for the planned mixed-use development. They include to provide an opportunity for mixed-use land uses otherwise not permitted with the standard zoning district classifications. Again, I think this is just straight M1. There's not a mix. So that's one of my concerns. Also talks about open space. There's going to be open space in here, although I'm not sure how important that is. And facilitate integration of mixed-use development in rural character of the area and blend it harmoniously with adjacent land use districts and existing development. I'm not sure if that's going to be accomplished here. So that, that's where I'm kind of at. I do think, I mean, one of the positives is if you're going to put distribution centers or warehouse, half mile or whatever it is from the exchange, that is a positive. However, I said, I don't think that should be the only thing to consider. Everybody else have comments, questions, discussion? Well, move Resolución number 22-01-18-1, Resolución to deny the request to amend the zoning map submitted by Allenire LLC for properties 9818 Palmer Road, 10156 Palmer Road, and 10829 Hazelton Etna Road and the related parcel from agricultural and general business to plan mixed-use development. Do you have a second? Okay, so, so what, just section one? I moved that the board trustees denies their zoning request to amend the zoning map submitted by, yeah, Allenire.
You don't have to move like that. You're just going to say in section one and then pick the highlighted area.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, and I think there's a typo in there. There's two submitted, web submitted by, submitted by. So I moved to strike submitted by for the second line. In section one.
So basically you're going to say in section one it's denied and probably as presented because you don't have anything to attach because you didn't, you didn't approve it.
But the, well, there's amendments submitted. Where is that amendment? They submitted amendment reducing the square footage.
Right, you're just going to put as presented because you guys didn't change anything on that.
Okay. So what they presented was already included?
Yeah, you're just going to put as presented, and what they presented will be attached to this resolution.
As presented.
You could put as presented in exhibit A if you want.
As presented in exhibit A.
Well, your exhibit A is going to be what?
Exhibit A will be the.
What John just printed for you.
Okay, the amendment. This right here, definitely.
Yeah, that will be your exhibit A. Was there a date on that, John?
August 6th, July 21st.
That's not like the last date, John, August 6th. Does that make sense, Laura?
Yes.
Okay. You still need your second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson, seconds. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All right, roll call, please.
Rosalind McKee.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeff Johnson.
Yes.
That passes.
Yeah, you have the resolution.
Thank you, John. I move to new business, 2022 permanent appropriations. Mr. Johnson, I understand you were working on that.
I gave you guys a printout, one dog, spreadsheet, I kind of worked it out, which we threw in. These are testing the main ideas. I took like last couple of years losing, I took what we had coming in from the thing. I kind of changed those numbers around in order. I think it's been last, our review, auditors, certification that we got for this year. What were we going to get? That's a bad narrative. Items of highlights. On the income, since we didn't pass the, down on Roden Bridge, we see Roden Bridge levy down there, line 2031-101-1,000. See what that says?
What is the first three numbers?
2031.
Okay.
Dash 101. That's zero. They're going with about six.
615.
Yeah, about 615, but since we rescinded the levy for a year, we had no money for that.
Okay.
Okay, that would have been a 16, 615,000. The real estate tax up on the top line, 1,000 dash 101000, that was an increase there. I showed the increases for some of the JUDS coming on. Those are kind of estimates we might get out of some of them. Basically, they're the same years. It looked like we didn't quite get that much last year from those. We'll probably get more this year since the tax collection has started on those. The JUDZ 1 forces the one side, JUDZ 2 is the Amazon site. Those are about what we got this year on those. Some other fees are in there.
One question I have is on the other miscellaneous.
Where, which one are you talking about, please?
This one right here. Second group bottom. Last year it was 2 million.
Yes.
Not zero.
Well, that would, that would have been revenue coming in. So we kind of looked at last year, we would thought we would get, we would do a loan, and that was where the loans, money was going to go to, $20 loan.
Oh, okay.
And so I don't see this as a loan this year, so it's a pally income.
It was a loan just for?
Just for.
Purchase, just a loan.
Yeah, we decided we purchased a park, we decided that's what it was for. That was the revenue that we thought we would get as a loan or a bond or whatever it was, not a loan or a bond, I believe. That's what they put that in for. So I just took that out because I figured we'd need that this year.
And what was it for, the amount of?
It was, it was two, on the old, it was $200. The prior was $200.
Okay. And then I noticed the motor vehicle license, state vocal. Those are the same amounts, but they're reversed. Where at? The little state vocal, right here. The little state vocal, right here. If you look at the prior year. They're flipped. I don't know if that's important.
Yeah.
And there's twenty-two and seventeen.
Yeah.
And you've got seventeen and twenty-two.
My mistake, I looked at.
I just figured.
Okay.
I'll just draw it out. Just gonna put these two around. Thought I fixed that. I think I had it fixed, I changed it.
And then on the second page on the top, funding CRG road prior is two million, zero this time.
That was another thing that we thought we were gonna, like with lending, we didn't need it. We weren't getting any money for that end. That road is already put in. I thought it was, well, it was in and out when we did a grant, put the road in and then we would, the money go back out to pay it off, so.
And then. I did have a question about the salaries of mid and zoning later on. And maybe we've gotta talk to you about reinstituting, reinstituting the administrator. I don't know if we wanna include anything in that.
Well, that's something we should look into.
Just amend it later and then change.
If the other, well, you'd wanna do it underneath the.
That, and then also Stephen, she'll lose time appropriating that because that's a question I did have. Apparently, right now, it's time between roads and zoning is not being allocated. And that's a concern of mine, being that they're paid out of roads fund with road and bridge levy taxes that should be allocated separately. So is he included in part of that?
Um, no, I did not on that.
I mean, these, these are questions.
Right.
Fiscal officers, but he's not.
Exactly.
Right, that's the problem I had, I was not sure how they're doing. I don't think he's.
They're not tracking it.
No.
And I, I think that needs to be, just for administrative purposes, not much time, but also, like I said, road and bridge levy taxes.
And I didn't really put. Well, I didn't really put it in there. It's out of the general fund that I did, it'll come out of for some of that, so.
So just address like if we do an administrator, we can change that later. I don't know if you wanna.
Put some budget in there.
I mean, there's money to move, there's extra money.
If you just look on the page, the second page here at the top, it shows our total revenue, fund revenue that we're getting in. It's that five million, six hundred and thirty-three.
Okay.
And then we have the fund balance.
That we had leftovers from this year to carry over.
And so we got, you know, a little nine million dollars to work with this year.
We'll have to just amend it.
Can I take my totals for, take my total for, my totals for like seven point six or something like that? So there's a little money there.
Then, sorry if I borrowed.
No, no, you're fine because I had to look all this up, so.
Yeah, medical insurance, you had two hundred and twenty thousand in twenty-twenty, I didn't have the twenty-twenty-one number.
I could not find those numbers either, I was using.
That was two thousand one, two hundred and one thousand. And I know typically they'd be going up about like ten percent, so I think we stay under that.
Be under or over?
This is when I would guess was the under because straight.
That one year he didn't have an increase, remember, one year he didn't have.
Last year.
No, we did lose.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, we didn't mail brand this year either. I was looking, we have a guy off. Where's the thing from last year?
I mean, it won't be far off, but it's just.
I know, it's hard to. Yeah, here we go. Fun, there's a big question, Mark. Which, which line item is that? That's.
This pitch to the.
General fund.
General fund administration.
So one thousand, two, thirteen?
No, two, two twenty-one.
Two twenty-one?
Medical insurance.
Yeah, we only did, we only spent eighty percent of that this year, last year.
Oh, last year, for this one?
Eighty percent.
As long as it.
That was it, it was seventy-nine point nine, nine-five percent we spent through the end of the year last year, so I just didn't update it because of that.
All right, that's good. Then, third page, public safety. Third page. First item, public safety. Contracted services sheriff last year was two hundred and twenty thousand, this year is three fifty.
Thank you for that.
I think your trash went up with the rental.
Well, we don't, yeah, I just, I'd put it in there if we wanted to pay it for like twice. I threw the trash lines there, like, that's about where it would be. But we don't have to spend that either.
But as far as, but as far as the sheriff, like I said, final for twenty-twenty was two fifteen. That was two W Ds back then, right?
But we paid.
Do we have to buy the cruisers?
No, I think we had to pay extra bill right early this year, I think, didn't we? I saw a high bill, was that in here? Well, I know we talked about an extra sheriff possible too.
Okay, so that's right, okay. I was wondering why.
I spread the remaining here for if we had outstanding payment, but sometimes it's laid behind. Like they make bills for like this expensive kinds, we also get a big bill for the whole entire thing. That's why it's been, so it's hard to hit. At the same time, we decided we had a third one, there's some more money in there for that. That was the reason for it, though.
And then for contracted services, the trash, you just put that in there for?
I just put that in there about, that was two trash payments, so that's, it's in the budget. We don't have to spend, we don't want it. It's under there. I just don't wanna do it, I just left it in there so we had something if we wanted to do that, we probably made extra revenue from the money.
Does that combine with the levy, that's almost a going dollar or something?
I know.
I, I mean, I'd rather make sure that, I mean, you guys were, you know, the previous board was talking about a loan. And we're paying, you know, paying that trash and pay, it's, I think we need to make sure that we're, you know, fiscally solid, you know, solid.
Yes, I find that, we, when I was talking about a bond or something on the road, yes.
I mean, eventually it'd be, be good to eliminate the levy, the road and bridge levy permanently, if we can.
Well, yeah.
I mean, if we're getting that much revenue from.
Well, that, you know, last year we were looking at ways, you know, we started looking at ways to get back. You were in this discussion, we were discussing how to get back, and that was one of the ways that I, I thought about. And that gave, that gave money back across the board to all people that paid that tax. That was the way I knew how to do it, that everybody in the township, that needed that, even the ones in rural. That's all their tax limits too.
Though, I know there were a few areas that weren't included in that, that had rompiness part of their.
Well, not the trash.
Assist to the trash. But yeah, levy.
The tax, like I'm talking on the trash. The trash would not have been a real support, wouldn't have fallen that, but the levy would have affected everybody. We're always trying to find a way to affect everybody, to get some money back to everybody, that was the way. I found a deal last year with that.
And then, under same page, capital, second line improvements of sites.
Capital, second page or something?
No, right under same page.
Oh, you're on.
Contract, yeah. Third page.
Third page? How much?
Yeah, yeah, on buildings or capital.
She's got that all in the log here, stuff.
Yes.
Yeah, it was two hundred thousand, previous year was two million.
Yeah.
Is that a typo? Was, I just wanna make sure why is it nine hundred percent production?
No, I think, I don't remember what I did that before. I reduced that down because.
And there's an improvement in sites and all the stuff for the garage in the last few years.
The improvements? Yeah, a lot of that was the garage things, so we'd be able to put some money on the garage and on refurbishing the other one.
Because I know last, for, it was two million last year, two million for twenty-twenty. Only two thousand spent in twenty-twenty.
Right, it's out here, well, I spent two thousand, so why? But they can have, no, I did put some of that in there for capital improvement of sites, like if you have sites now, there's a building park where you have, so other sites.
Let's address that. I was just curious why and make sure it wasn't a typo.
Well, yeah, it was not, I did that on purpose, I didn't figure we needed that much, but on there, but I was.
And then the next page, road and bridge contracted services, you have a million?
Roughly, we do, it costs.
Because twenty-twenty was one point five, twenty-twenty-one was two million. I'm sitting a wide.
Well, we didn't, we ended up in twenty-twenty, I don't think we paid much, is that correct? We didn't, twenty-twenty, we didn't pay hardly anything, did we?
Twenty-twenty was one point, almost two million.
We paid that, we, we.
Oh, wait, no, no, I'm sorry.
How much is a mile it costs to pay, right? It's what?
Roughly a hundred thousand.
Roughly over a hundred thousand, we try to ten miles a year times payment, so that gives me a hundred thousand dollars into, or a million dollars into, for paying every year.
Okay, so in twenty-twenty, that actually was one hundred and seven thousand. It just, a hundred and seven thousand.
Yeah, I didn't think we'd pay.
When it's budgeted for one point five.
Right, and we got, we got grants, so here are things, if you write, if you ask for grants, if you ask every year, you might not get it every other year. But if you write, if you do bigger jobs and more things evolve, sometimes you can borrow grant money for that, so.
I know with the, that proper ease, that application was pulled, so we won't be doing that this year.
Yeah, so I don't know what we're doing. So we'll have to have, so we'll get extra money coming for that because that got pulled, so if we're gonna do ten miles, it'll be a million dollars again, so.
All right, I was just.
Is that all right?
Curious.
That, that explains it.
Now, in all this, like, there's talk right now with the task law and T I D about refugee grows.
I did not put anything for refugee.
Because they're asking for three point five.
Yeah, and I don't, that's, that's a whole different issue, one of the discussion. Wouldn't be part of this, I mean, you have to put it in the budget.
It'll be a budget, but we don't know how it's gonna be structured, it just comes from the well versed.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have any revenue coming in to pay for, or do you have money that they will go out either?
Well, it's not even pretty too good.
Right, so I didn't put it in, let the fish accessory, it would be done this year anyways, so.
All right. And then same page, capital project, under other at Park Seventy, there was nothing. Last year, it was six twenty-nine, funding two million?
Uh, capital projects, oh, yeah, at the Park Seventy?
Yeah, because last year.
Yeah, and some of that money comes, it, it was in there, so we were just spending it, and we never did spend it, and we won't spend it. Some were in, some came back out. I couldn't get a clear answer what all that was for, but I think some of those monies came and went back out, and so it's a dead deal. What we got in here before, or got in this year, we spent it back out the next year. Some were carried over, so.
That's my questions on that.
So I just took it out because I would see it coming in this year, allow it this year.
I, I reached out to, just because the fiscal officer not doing anything for this year with the budgets at. And apparently he didn't file with the budget commission.
Last year this year.
For this, last year, July for this year, for certificate of estimated resources. And they said that they cannot accept a permanent appropriations until it's applied for. And they provided this document, this was ours last year submitted, but the highlighted text, he needs those submitted. He filled in a lot of the tax revenue, but if we can get this to him.
You know, Brad said that, but I emailed Brad on that, and I looked when I got here this morning, and I did email back some stuff to Brad. And he said, I said, is this what you're looking for a couple of weeks back? And he said, yes. So that must not have been what he was looking for.
Was that on the coronavirus?
No, it's been having.
That's on this one?
That had to do with what Dr. Hannah.
Okay, yeah.
Now Walter was gonna go back, I talked to him this morning, and look and see if he could find it. Because I saw where you had said we didn't do it, and that's usually done back like in August or.
In July.
July, yeah, it's usually in the start of July.
Nothing was ever filed, and so they had nothing to approve. And we cannot file permanent appropriations until this is in there. They have a meeting Thursday, so if we can get it to them pretty quick, we can deal with it. So I'm not sure if it would be appropriate to pass the resolution, hold on to it, submit.
Well, that usually has a resolution with it that you have to pass. What you have in your hand usually has a resolution. That in your hand usually has a resolution provided from that.
Okay. But this is just a spreadsheet, man, and I don't think.
I don't remember seeing this.
In that one email, just within the last thirty days, it had that attached and a resolution, and I sent him a resolution back. But I think it was the resolution where they said not to collect the road and bridge levy. And he said, yes, that's what I'm looking for. And then when you sent that out, I went back and looked, and I thought, well, that has to do with the road and bridge levy. So then I went back in the summer and looked, and I couldn't find it, so I asked Walter about it this morning. But there, I mean, look, there's a resolution that goes with that, that goes with that document.
Is that, is that because we, we took, wanted to take that levy off, the taxes for this year?
No.
Pro?
I don't know if that's what held it up.
That's separate.
But I don't know if that's what held it up, but I've never not, we've never not passed that in the summer, so I don't know if it got missed or. Every summer they pass that and then I send it back.
So you're saying the previous board did pass it?
I thought they did, but Walter's supposed to be finding it for me, I can't find it.
Those carryover balances what we have.
Because I don't recall a meeting when it was passed, but. But that, so that's where, so I don't know if we wanna address the resolution for the permanent appropriations.
Well, here's the list right here, the carryovers are all just being right here.
And he says that they have to.
Well, he gives you, Brad Contrance gives you the numbers that have to be passed.
He wants, yeah, this is.
Well, so we could do, but do, so do we wanna hold off on passing, I don't know if it's appropriate to pass the permanent appropriations, hold it. He said if he receives it without this, they can't do anything.
I think you need to pass what's in your hand and I can find you a resolution for that, so.
Well, we'd have to fill it out first.
He usually puts your numbers in there, he didn't.
We'd have to.
Usually the county gives us the numbers for that.
But we'd have to supply, he, he inputted some of the numbers, but.
Let me find the email, he gives you the numbers for that.
Well, they said they changed the form, because this is the form to approve it.
He's asking for carryable on the per, in software, so there's a U N software, and here's this thing.
So I don't know if we wanna hold off, it just tracks permanent appropriations on the first.
But if they're meeting this week, does he need that from you tonight?
Well, he's meeting Thursday.
What's in your hand?
So if he gets it tomorrow.
Then we just gotta pass it tonight.
So we can fill in?
Why move it? I didn't see anything with the resolution or may ever pass, they, they just have to be submitted. Because the fiscal officer submitted.
There's a resolution, I have to.
Would you wanna, you put that on hold until, address the other stuff?
Let me find it before you.
Let, let her find that, address the other matters?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, going back to this still, our, our budget thing?
Well, I mean, I don't have the other questions, the questions, fine for me, but that's my question of, should we hold on that until then?
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't know, I just, I just wanted to go and look, see what you thought about this, if you had any reasons or questions about it, so I'll try to answer in nine thirty-seven.
So it's seven million instead of ten million.
Yeah, because I know there was a question in the last audit, which I can get to later, of possible budget inflation. Because there's a pay change at ten million budget.
Right.
For trustees, fiscal officers, so maybe that was.
Well, we had a lot more money too last, last time because we spent, much like we spent, in the year we spent like, like, at least four million dollars in the year we spent, so.
In the audit, just for that, don't worry about that.
Yeah, so it's, so it's just a matter of, we don't have that money, and we take off the four million that we had, sitting here, add that to what we had issued, I could be all telling that, so.
So do you wanna table this while she's looking and I'm looking to address this?
I'm bringing you some stuff right now.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll table the permanent appropriations.
I'm gonna put this, this mark, is this, have you seen the sheet?
Is that your, well, so you had two of them.
Well, this, this sheet, yeah, this sheet is the one of, of all the revenue that came in, this sheet, how much to receive and how much the percentage of what budget it was.
Well, whatever.
On all this.
He's, he said whatever these requests appears is all.
Those numbers, I think they're all in the sheet, that's what I'm looking at.
What's the date on that one? Is that the one that he had spit out?
Twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
Okay, yeah, I wish I'd written it.
Okay, so we'll table that while Laura looks that up. On the resignation of fiscal officer Walter Rogers and zoning commission member Alicia Zachar, I move to accept.
Probably need to do this in separate.
Oh, separate, okay. I move to accept the resignation of fiscal officer Walter Rogers, that is effective one thirty-one twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Johnson, seconds, discussion? Roll call, please.
Rosalyn McKee?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeff Johnson?
Yes.
Approved. I move to accept the resignation of zoning commission member Alicia Zachar, effective twelve thirty-one twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Johnson, seconds, discussion? Roll call, please.
Rosalyn McKee?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeff Johnson?
Yes.
All right. Then the next on the agenda, I wanted to add about public records policy production. As a resident, I've had a real struggle getting records requests filled a lot of times. One was a video request from a Pulte hearing over a year ago. I've, I've since found that the prosecutor actually indicated it should be turned over, and it still wasn't. So I, I wanna make sure that this board. So, I, I want to make sure that this board, uh, does things different. I, I know a lot of the records requests are, go through the fiscal officer. However, there were indications where trustee Carlisle was directing public records requests. So I think we need to ensure that we're transparent, providing records requests to the public in a timely manner. And try not to play gotcha games with boarding, did they ask for this, oh, then we don't have to give it to them. We need to assist the people with what they're asking for, because I, I've seen a disparity in that. When, when we were doing the petition for referendum, took over two weeks to get a copy of the resolution. And we had a 38 time period. When I turned that petition in, within three hours, those were scanned and emailed to Pulte's attorney. That's a great disparity of service. We, we can't pick winners or losers. Even, even if, say, tonight, we passed the rezoning, and somebody wanted to do a resolution against us. We should work to get them the information in a timely manner. And we're still, I'm still dealing with a lot of, uh, that records request, because the secured contractor, Mike Fox, apparently forgot passwords, couldn't access the system. Again, I, I think it's board, we need to do as much as possible, and look at our policies of when we can scan stuff in, to provide it. To not have people come here for two pages, pay 20 cents, when we can just scan something. We did it for 12, or why can't we do it for 16s? So I would like to address it, maybe at a future meeting, a policy that, that would accomplish that. Questions, discussion?
Can I make a statement?
Yes.
I just want you to know, your policy does not appear issues. Your policy, if I have a record on my desk and I can get it to residents, it's going to be a resident.
Yeah, I think I heard, there's a sunshine law that dictates policy, and there are policies that follow that. So if, if it didn't get followed, that might be a lawful permission. If it got followed, other than I don't think what policy makes the, makes the records actually happen.
Just on, on the, on the video one, all, all trustees were copying. And the prosecutor did say turn it over, and it still didn't turn, turn over. I had to get my attorney model, and the township board wanted hiring trustee Carlisle's private attorney to address it, instead of just producing it. And that, that's my issue of, maybe not policy, but implementation of it. But also, like I said, maybe policy of if we can scan something, scans, and we do it for developers. I know that was directed by trustee Carlisle to scan those, but if we're gonna make exceptions for developer, we could certainly do it for a resident. So, that's what I would like to address. I think we'll, we'll deal with a lot of that when we get the new fiscal officer, because I know they're in charge of the records.
Right.
So I, I think that will alleviate a lot of it. But as far as, like I said, the one area I would like to look at is, and I'm not sure Laura, how easy.
Well, I'm not, you know, Walter Rogers wasn't involved in the one you're talking about right there. Walter did not have any issues with that record.
There are different ones, well, I, I did have an issue with the taking over three weeks for the budget, as a trustee-elect, and then pay for it. It, it's just stuff like that, so I, I think we need to, like I said, maybe on policy on that, and then also for any trustee-elect, that there's no charges, or no, no question about access to records.
Well, I can assure you that our current beliefs here, and.
I know Laura, no, Laura.
I, I just want people to know that current belief has nothing to do with any of the delays whatsoever.
No, Laura's been great with records, and I, I understood that when, when there were delays, there were others causing that.
I just want to make that clear.
At their direction, so, yeah, no, that definitely.
And I can.
And I've said that publicly many times, Laura's been great on that, but, like I said, I've, I've recently been able to get access to the old emails, and.
Thought you were able to get in those?
Yes, and.
You've seen the drive, then, right?
Not yet, but since there was no transitional help, that's what I was trying to build back of where we're at. And that's where I came across the prosecutor saying, turn it over, because I was about to claim, go file with the court of claims.
Oh, I can get all kinds of records just to find.
And that's why I want to stop that, so we don't have to spend any more money, but you shouldn't have to go through that. So, especially when the prosecutor says, turn it over, and it still held, that's, to me, that's just not right. I know this board will be different.
Yes.
Uh, and like I said, hopefully, you know, the fiscal officer comes in, I, I just want to say that. And to anybody that requests public records, if you have an issue, come to me personally, because I will, I will ensure that you get those, or I'll make a lot of notes into it. So.
Fair to say.
That zoning assistant, um, right now, Stephen Shaluk is working three days in the road department, and two days in the zoning office, hoping Mr. Singleton. He's gonna be out, uh, for medical reasons in February. And Stevens needs the ability to sign permits. We need, but we, we, we need to deal with his appointment as zoning assistant, whatever one. But with the serve union action, we need to verify, I haven't heard back from the prosecutor, can we do that? Would that be viewed as taking him out?
Yeah, I understand what you all, I don't want to do that.
So, I just want to, I just want to bring that up.
Yeah, that's a really big deal, when you're taking a union employee and putting them in an administrative position.
Part-time.
Part-time, even if it's part-time, you're still a union employee.
But in some, there's a.
That's why you would have to address it with the prosecutor, because you're taking a person out of a contract and putting them in an administrative.
Well, we don't have a contract.
Well, you want, that's what, what is it gonna start? I mean, is it gonna start before you leave, or after, or why you're going?
And we won't, we won't have a contract.
So then you're good, and you don't have to worry.
Well, no, but they're, they're representing them right now, so there's.
You're still in the process.
We're, there's limitations of what you can do.
Yes.
So, that's needed, uh, I was hoping we could do it tonight, I haven't heard back from the prosecutor.
Maybe like, just go ahead and appoint a, a composition, or I don't know if we can.
If that violates any kind of union, that would be like trying to hire someone that was part of it, they might look at it, as you're trying to.
Can't do it, I would wait, no, I would just wait it out and see. But you guys meet.
Open up a can of worms with some other stuff that's gonna come around.
Your next meeting is before he has out.
Oh, good, okay.
Your next meeting would be before the.
I'm gonna take us to Pilar and try.
Okay, then we should have some answers by then.
I think Adam doesn't take a time off to pick you guys on that Facebook performance.
So you can be on it, or there too, or something like that.
If we, we get it sooner, we could do a special meeting, just, if we need to.
And if we need to, it was like, in order to get this done beforehand, too.
I, I just want to bring that up.
Yep. Alright, that's a question, I'm unsure what to do about that.
And as soon, I, I just want to make sure we don't violate any, any kind of requirements as far as the union covenant for the road crew. So, uh, but, uh, so that, and then E Administrator, I know, uh, during the campaign, and even prior to taking our seats, there was the discussion about administrator, we had one back until 2017, Rob Lapp.
We didn't really have, he was.
He was administrator zoning.
Zoning, yeah, zoning, yeah.
Administrator.
There really wasn't a full administrator, it was like a part-time thing.
But, I mean, since then, I mean, I, I.
He tried to make it more of an administrator job than he was zoning house.
Yeah.
That was more like how, took it one part more seriously than the other.
I mean, we're, we're grown as a township, uh, I mean, we're, we're small, small enough where we don't need one, like some larger townships to handle that stuff, but big enough to.
I have a suggestion about that, if you people hear me on that, I mean, of course, you've got to write something about it, but I don't think a true township administrator is, is what you're looking for. I think you'd be more of a council administrator.
He'd be like a consultant?
Not really consultant, I, I would think we'd want an employee, but I think we'd want an employee that was legally versed in township law. Also, we have a lot of these contracts.
Now, they can't, now, an attorney can't, because that's what they tried up in Orange Township with Andrew King. And you can't, you can't act as an attorney in that regard. I mean, you have, he's not as experienced, but, like, Mr. King could not act as attorney for a township.
I mean, like, replace the prosecutor's office.
He can review, he would know the law, he would review the law, right? And then we wouldn't, we can use the county prosecutor all the time, which you have to go through again. He could review contracts, he could review all that stuff, and give us advice on those that was not legally binding, but at the same time, that would tell us what we need to do on it.
But, I mean, I think, I, I know the prosecutor's office is a little overwrought right now, since there's staff shortages and that.
Exactly, I think it's a little.
But, well, I, I think they need to address that, I know they have a position open, and nobody's applied for it currently. They've got to handle that in-house, but, I mean, I'm thinking, since 2017, and, I mean, I, I've learned that, uh, apparently, it was trustee Carlisle's objective to become an administrator for the township, even back then. That he's effectively acted as administrative for the township.
He has done administrative stuff, correct?
He, he's put in a lot of hours.
Yeah, well, he put in a lot of hours in administrative stuff, I don't think, I don't think it's his goal to be an administrator, he's a township trustee.
I've heard.
Why would you go on to work for, or for other people when you had that position that you.
Well, well.
So, but I would, you know, you're, he did act in that, he did that part of the job as a trustee, a lot of it.
Correct, and, and as I've heard, as I've heard, the plan was step down as trustee, become administrator.
That plan, I didn't hear that plan.
But regardless, I mean, there's a lot, and there's a lot of, uh, things that need to be done, and like I said, I think we're, we're small enough, we're, we don't, we're not a home rule township, so we don't need people over law directors and that, however, we're big enough, we're grown, we're, we need help, and, like I said, I, I can't do this whole time. I, there's, no, I, I can't.
I mean, we have.
I could put in hours, I can do it part-time, but I think we need assistance.
Get our, get our spots right now, I think, I think, like a road crew, certain things, an extra job, or manager roads, the whole thing by itself for the most part, I think that's, a lot of that's hands-off, just the, you know, hey, what do you think about this? People help make a decision.
I was great, I was great, it's almost run.
I think Laura knows how to run the office without any help, and John, John Williams is there, I mean, without any help, I mean. I, I don't think that's a problem as far as managing those people, if that's what you're talking about, administrator.
So do you think you just need a part-time administrator then?
No, I didn't, I didn't think you need somebody with more of an expertise in the, in the stuff we got there. We have all these jet contracts.
We'll definitely be an administrator.
We have jet Z contracts, we have land contracts, we have, uh, all these boards, we have, you know.
That's very special in this law, that's why we.
Well, there's stuff, yeah, there's some of the stuff we have to turn in, yeah. Exactly, that's my next point, we're paying all around, all this money, you show us what you have in there, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of money.
Those, those were funded through the jets.
Not all, but some is.
The BIAs are supposed to be.
Well, they are, but not all, there's some isn't.
The Jordan should be.
Should be, but if you don't ever get the jet finished, and you don't, you don't get any money for it, because you have to start, you don't get anything for it. Which we have some of those that are sitting up right now, you know, which we've spent a bunch of money on. So, if you never get it done, you never get, you don't get the money, so what I'm saying is, you know, they're nice and fine, but you've got to finish it, you've got to start collecting it, you've got to, you know, and that's the kind of things I think we think of, like, you know, like this kind of stuff can't get left off.
Well, that's more the administrator that handles, well, that, that's the fiscal office.
Right, this is fiscal, but still, you know, we're.
The administrator.
He would, he would walk some of this kind of stuff, or she, or whoever, like me. You know, budget things, they would make some of the budget thing, I'm not in that.
Correct, but, you know.
But do you think it would be full-time or part-time? I think by having a person with, with township law, and a law background, I think we get stuff, I think we could, we can provide you almost full-time. I would think, so there's plenty of other things, like what you're assigned to them, other than, I don't want to hire an administrator to supervise a meeting.
No, well, I think the administrator would do more supervised, would deal with developers, would do. They're bringing an envy of buffer between us and employees, so that if there is a transition, I plan on, with the transition, like, say, what happened with this last board, we wouldn't have to scramble to figure out, because I, I don't know if you figured out anything about the cemetery yet?
No, I don't have anything.
This board just, so if you have an administrator that's that buffer.
That would have been that person that could have handled it all.
I know, you have to handle that, you know, um, road crew takes care of the cemetery, keep, keep, and open and close it, raise, all that stuff. Laura keeps track of the.
I'd say I've got all the information on the cemetery, it's raining, it doesn't have a.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, I, the first time I heard that, so that's who been out, so I'll take it from Laura. Those two have managed that part of the cemeteries for years, that part of the room, you know, the part that needs, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking that if we're gonna, if we're gonna grow, if we're gonna grow properly, the administrator can deal with the, the developers, and not make it political, and not make it one person, because right now, every developer I've met with was John Carlisle, was the voice, he was the one dictating everything, and I don't think that's the way it should be. And when you have an administrator, you have a buffer between, and they're handling that part, and we can still do our part, but not.
Well, yeah, a lot of times, they want to see a public official when they're talking with those people. Initial talks, we can not, and when they get started, they want a public official, because they want to see if there's support for it.
Well, and sometimes they're asking, well, you, you know, they want you to speak for the rest of the board, but you can't. You can't, unless you're having discussions outside meetings, you, you can't do that. And I think we've got to do, sort of do things properly.
It's not that you can't have a special, you can't decide anything.
Even, even discussions.
You can pass information on, you just can't have.
But you can't have it both, both ways, yeah.
You know what I'm saying, because I would get, I would, I mean, I've rarely gotten a public official to do live phone call, who was giving me information about what was going on, so I was up to date with them.
But if there's a back and forth, if there's a law of this and that, I think.
Well, I can talk, I can talk back to them, I mean, I.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I almost, and, and the prosecutor was saying that that's dangerous territory.
As long as you don't decide anything.
Even discussions, because executive session, you don't decide anything, you discuss.
But at the same time, the discussions are, are around information that's coming out, so you're not blasting the notes, you're not getting it from your paper. Of course, people are calling you and telling you, but at the same time, that's a rough thing to have, is when people are telling you stuff that you don't know what you're talking about, you don't know anything about it.
But I think, I think there's a fine line of not in an open meeting, not in a, so I think we just got to be aware on that, but, like I said, I, I, most townships I've researched do have an administrator, the ones that don't have very little activity, very, and it's not to shirk off duties or responsibilities, uh, I mean, right now, I'm not working, this is my full-time, it's going to. Yep, and so I can't keep doing this, I'll do it for a bit, but either you, you two need to take out more, or, even, even if you did, I still think we need an administrator for the best interest of the township going forward, to have someone that can write grants that. I think, I think we could, I think we could, the money of an administrator just with grants, just with, because they would be on it to.
They'd know what's, what's in that answer a little.
I, I disagree on the legal stuff, because I think. I, yeah.
I know you, I know your question, so I know you see it.
But you want specialized, and, and again, they cannot give legal opinions, because that's what we're township trying to do.
Yeah, they try to use their, their.
They hired him because of his legal experience, but you can't use it, and that, that didn't turn out too well, kind of a separate issue, but, so, I was gonna propose, uh, post it, to see if there's an interest. There was, we have a prior township administrator job description, that more provided. But, what's, what's your thoughts, Mr. Key?
You know, I'm, I support having a administrator, but I was just trying to figure out, okay, should it be full-time, should it be part-time? Or should we go get and do like a consultant that has the background, that worked in townships, or worked, that knows the business, where we could bring them in and pay them by the hour, it's a consulting job, we're not, we're not paying them that amount. Say we decided to pay them 80,000 a year versus a contract, so, I'm just, I, there's a lot of things that I want to discuss. And not just say, oh, yeah, we need, yeah, we do need one, but, and what level? Do we need it full-time, part-time, do we need it as a consultant, do we need them, you know?
I, yeah, I think consultants are great for getting out facts and different things, as far as being a township type voice, I don't, they're.
My, my issue with the consultant is, they're, they're consultant, they don't, they have no vested interests, they know, so. So being an administrator kind of owns the word. So being an administrator kind of owns the word, owns, and.
I'm with you on that, yes.
And again, a buffer between, because I know coming in here, everybody was spreading rumor, we're, we're coming in, we're going to fire everybody, we're going to. Having that buffer, having that, because you shouldn't have to run in one trustee or another, or.
Mark, I can speak as an employee, if you had a township administrator, you're going to stop the numbers and then you'd work.
Oh, I know, every power, I understand that.
But I'm sorry, but to the extent you're saying it wouldn't matter, so, so let me ask, okay, so how soon, see, that would matter to me, how soon would you want an administrator to get in?
As soon as possible. Just to deal with what we're dealing, we've got so much development, I've got developers calling left and right. Like you get, again, with grants, we have, I think we're possibly going to miss out on some stuff. And even just the grants alone could pay for, for.
Yeah, I don't have any.
Right.
That's like the cause of that, because after this, it would have to be realization for us as a township, in our direction towards the one I figured, and so like, like with those things.
But if you have someone that can push, I mean, even.
Your road grant's not going to come until October, just like.
No, I know, the OBW, yeah, well, OBW sees that, but there, there's so much at the state level and the, it's, I think we're missing out compared to other townships in that regard. So I, I would, I would push for something sooner, like I said, just, we've got a lot of issues, even just procedurally wise to deal, dealing with, like I said, the road crew and the zoning split, that time wasn't coming separately, Walter should have been on that. But you can handle a lot more with the administrator, and like I said, we had a prior township administrator job description. Not sure where this came from, in that Rob Platt was administrator slash zoning.
Oh, those, oh, I remember, right, there's a, there's a couple of numbers we looked at and said, okay.
Do you know where that came from, or when that was?
Yeah, I think this is.
I think John and Rainey wrote this, and then they compared them, and then three board members discussed it, and we, we made it into one.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
But at that time, we didn't need a full-time administrator, and we needed a zoning inspector at that time.
Oh, that was good.
We didn't have a zoning inspector when we hired Rob Platt. Chris had took the job at the county.
I saw something else zoning slash administrator, different.
Yeah, because that's what we, we didn't figure we needed a full-time administrator, but we needed a zoning person.
I, I'm, I'm just thinking that, I mean, if we're going to pinch pennies and we're losing dollars, like, I mean, we're
Yeah, this.
Thousand road levies, we're, it's, I think it'd be money well spent, if you get the return, we'd actually run more efficiently. And I mean, we, we even have stuff that I saw last year, that the SWPPP for the garage wasn't addressed, I don't believe, with the stormwater protection plan. And I, I found those emails.
You're talking about MS four?
MS four.
John and Bob, I handled MS four.
They're.
They might not have been John Carlisle's emails, because John says.
We don't have a plan though.
He goes, there's not, there's not a plan, there's supposed to be a, like a digital plan.
We need a plan.
But don't you go to those meetings, right?
So, yeah, that's what I. Yeah, well, well, we need a plan. It, it was addressed to trustee Curlo and other stuff. It's that, those kind of things that need to be kept up on.
Yeah, I think something I would think you could hire a consulting like a plan or something.
You can, or an administrator, or, I mean, again, you're going to hire consultants when you could.
But I think you could do an individual job like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Consultants, but consultants are good. And that, that's what you hire a consultant, that's what I want to do. I mean, if the administrator had time, that's one thing, but like you, your consultants, would that be perfectly reasonable, something?
Well, my thing is, if, if you spend money on the administrator, they can do that, they can do grants, they can do, they could handle the things that need to handle as we're growing, and.
Mark, why don't you and I sit down and do a, a list, and you guys, next meeting in January, where you guys can sit and compare them and determine what you want your job to be? I mean, how you don't put a job in application after when you've already decided what you're looking for?
Well, that's what I sent those to you guys last week.
Right, and that's.
I mean, you and I could sit down, if they give us info, put it all together.
I don't remember seeing this.
Yeah.
They have this down or something.
I tried sending something.
Yeah, I was.
I recognize it from way back, but I don't remember.
Well, the email he sent had some stuff from OTA too. He had lots of different things in that email. There were several attachments.
They'll reach out to OTA about their, their descriptions, their.
Oh, that's probably why.
Well, did you and I?
Do I have this?
But I, I, I think if, like I said, head to township, we're, we're not huge, we're not a valid township, but we're not small, we're growing, and I think we have the need, and we're going to hurt ourselves if we don't. So I, I mean, we, we could table it and think about it until next year.
I'll, I'll read it. I mean, I, I recognize, I remember all that stuff there, but.
If the three of you guys would like maybe email your key things you're looking for, and then we can, maybe Mark and I work together and compile it? Would that help? If they, if they would send us.
You guys want to look over it and send Laura your key points, and Laura and I can work on it together, we can propose something.
That would work.
And give you guys a kind of a compiled document for this very big look.
And two, we can put it out there, whoever applies, if you have an attorney that has experience with stuff that wants to know, you just see, see what's out there. Like I said, we're not, Violet Township just hired their, our administrator replacing Andrew Robina last Saturday, but, and, and we wouldn't be anywhere near them, I mean, as far as compensation, so.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't set a compensation level either, right?
Right.
I guess that'd be something else, you have to figure out what you have in the script, what kind of compensation. Lovely rewards.
Typically, it's based on their experience and what we have, I mean, but we have to have a kind of a range, and we talked about something before, you know, we took off this stuff.
No, you have to have a split list and everything, and then you can pair out what's out there.
Do you want, do you want to review it then?
Yes.
Review and then.
Yeah, we could.
You and I can work together and get him something back out before the first day of February?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good, I'll take it.
I emailed you guys all the email that Brad had just sent within the last thirty days. I fixed that resolution for tonight, and I used the Schedule A he had attached in that last email. Now, I'm assuming he needs a pass showing the road levy, even though you guys passed not.
Now, this is something different.
That was something that came from Brad, and I emailed you, if you want to go look at your emails, so you can look at it tonight. I just forwarded you what he had sent us.
Right.
That's right off the email where he had asked Walter and said we didn't do it. Now, I forwarded in the email where they had passed not collecting the road levy. That's the one he told me was what he was looking for. This must have been what he was looking for.
This is something different.
If he did get it back in August, we're just doing it twice, so.
They did not receive this.
Yeah, but this is what I'm talking about. This is the standard resolution we do every year, and off of this.
Right, and this is, we need to send them the road levy, so, but it's separate than.
Yeah, he's got.
Certain, of estimated resources, so this.
I took this from that last, the email I just forwarded you literally from Mexico, and I filled it in.
So do you want to look into that tomorrow, maybe, with those, since you went through all the budgets and.
Well, if he needs this for the meeting Thursday, you guys need to pass this tonight.
Tonight.
If he needs this to bond, you need to pass this.
Where's that sheet? I had to make sure I got it up there.
Again, I'm not sure if we need to pass the estimated resources when doing, because it's separate from.
This was the email he was looking for that I thought he got.
No, this is road taxes.
The road taxes, he has the resolution from the road.
Correct, but this is.
This is what would have been done in August that did not happen, you're telling me.
Correct.
So this needs passed tonight for me to get to Brad tomorrow. And I can drive it out, or you can sign it, or whatever. I can change the name to you, or whatever.
I mean, again, we could have a special meeting to, I mean, if you can't make a jump for us, and I can, if we need to adjust, address it.
Yeah, I can find it, yeah. You can make a special, yeah, that's fine.
If you want to work on it, try it tomorrow or something.
Yeah.
The numbers on this came from the auditor's office. There's nothing to work on. This, Brad provides these numbers.
But had, this, this is. This deals with other revenue, this is just the road bridge, right?
If you pull up the email I sent you on your laptop right here, it's going to tell you what Brad was asking for, and I can test it. Right here.
Schedule A and B, are they?
Yeah, it says, I don't see that I ever received this resolution excepted by the trustees. This is what we would have done in August or September.
So while I never, was this something we should have done, or while I should have?
We do it every year, I think it just got missed for some reason. I don't know why it didn't happen. I couldn't find it today, and Walter was going to look for it.
But again, my understanding is it's two separate things, the road and bridge tax stuff, and then the estimate, the certificate or estimate.
You don't want to do it tonight, it's on you. I, I just tried to help you, Mark. That is what he was looking for that you're telling me to do. I can't find, I don't see where it ever got done.
The amounts, all accepting amounts is determined. Wait a minute, we didn't accept amounts, and they said we're going to get, is that else?
I can't find where it was ever done, and Walter didn't get back to me that. I don't see where you guys ever passed that for the summer.
So we can do it now.
They sent us, they sent us a sheet that said what our taxes would be.
Is that like a certificate that they do with?
Here's the Schedule A right here. Mark, did you see this, the Schedule A?
Yeah, I, I see that, but again, for.
That's one of the things they're asking that way.
But for minor sake, dealing with Austin Leklitter and Brad Catrell. It's a separate estimated resources that you apply for, a certificate that needs to be sent in, and it's not just, it's not the roads and that, but it's, it includes your budget amounts, because what they do is they certify that, yes, you have those estimated resources available, and then you can appropriate it to that. And you can't go above that, so that, to me, looks, this is separate.
What you're talking about, I don't know that the township has ever approved in the past. What's in your hand I gave you might.
Well, I think Walter just sent it, but I think Walter just sent this.
Yeah, I know, I can't speak from, I can't speak from Walter.
But that's why, that's why. The Lick and Cap auditor, Brad Catrell and Austin Leklitter indicated that they had not received this back in July. Because I, I just don't know if we can certify. I mean, if, if we need to, if you can work on this tomorrow, if we need to, I'm going to have a, a special meeting in the morning, or sometime to get it to them.
If they, I think that they're looking for something Walter does without your approval, he ought to be able to send it down. That's why we had to be UAN.
Well, I gotta have it, fiscal.
Well, that's what, it's, it's, it's the.
Fiscal should have signed it.
They need carry, carryover balances available on twelve thirty-one per fund, these much match, must match your UAN software. Estimated revenues you expect to receive during calendar year two thousand twenty-two.
Which is right here.
They, he has entered the estimated proper tax revenues in there already, so you don't have to put tax, license tax, gas tax, special assessment, bonds and other revenue you expect. So he needs us to fill it in, and I think that's something Mr. Rogers, as fiscal officer, does.
He might be able to do that without me.
Without the board, but he's not doing any of it, so they said that we can fill it out and send it. I don't know when the next meeting is, aside from.
I guess if he didn't do it, he's not going to sign it, so.
No, he doesn't need to sign, we can send it, we get all that, fill it in.
So we need this one, right? This is the current numbers from last, from twelve, add up twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. And it shows up for same, you know, last month's October, year next, pictures, and all the things. That's the first thing you said, right? The next thing he's looking for is this tax sheet here, the N D.
He didn't mention anything about that. This is.
What, what did you say? What was the thing he set up? Didn't you say, you just named that?
To the second page.
Second page. Oh, okay.
That's, that's what he.
So he's looking for the carryover balances, yeah, which I had right here. There's one thing he's looking for. And it does, because it came out right out of the UAN software.
Just got to match that.
Okay, I mean, that is, this is printed out, so that's it. Estimated revenue you expect received during calendar year.
Because they just approve top level, they don't go into each little fund and leave a top level.
Yeah, so that would be more of a form, look like. Was that a sheet I handed in, or something, except for, Mark, sorry.
No, that's right, we need to recruit, it'll be nice if this officer did this.
Yeah, um, I have two of these now, you gave me yours.
I printed you the one he had sent on December twenty-first, Jeff.
Yeah, no, I took the box, that's what I have. I don't want to take a sheet. All right.
I mean, just, do you just want to, I don't know when the next meeting is, I don't think it's urgent, because if we're not going to do appropriations until first.
Walter wanted to make sure you know, he can't pay these guys until appropriations is done. The US trustees, he can't pay.
I go for a sheet similar to this. By line thing, right? That, those are last year's, though.
It's got to be the unencumbered.
Right.
Unencumbered balance as of first year.
No, I have that, so.
So do we want, you just want to do that tomorrow, and then we could deal with whenever their meeting is, whenever they're. So I don't want to call something, I don't think we have to pass it more, I think we just have to send it in.
Well, we have, there's a thing we have, I'll be able to sign.
No, this is budget commissioners, so sign it, bug them, prove it.
Yeah?
All right. Yeah, the Lick County Budget Commissioner.
So, carryover balances, which we have in the, which we did that, that sheet's done too, it's on, it's on this one, right here.
But do you just want to deal with that? Or, or do you want to go through the rest of stuff?
No, I think I'm not, that's a different. So what we need is that, because right here's the one thing. Here's the revenue we were expecting. I got these right here as a revenue, so.
Well, if you got the information, it's not this, I have this sheet, and I'm looking at it, it's filling out this sheet.
If I just transfer numbers off this.
Can we just approve, can we just approve you completing that, sending it on end? Do you think that would suffice more?
Not if you need a full-fledged resolution. Maybe you work with Walter and get him the stuff that Laura needs to sign, but you can't pass a resolution like that.
Page you had to sign here, that there were any for you to sign.
But you're saying that's not what you think he's missing, so you, we're not talking the same thing.
He's missing two things.
What else am I missing?
Well, no, they're missing that tax stuff and this estimated resources.
So I fill out this, and I give him a copy of these, of the sheet that we're thinking of being added.
He just needs this.
Oh, he just needs that, he doesn't need.
He needs whatever's highlighted, fill in, send it.
Carrier balances within the sheet, that's made of revenue you expect received during calendar year.
Which would be on, which you figured out under budget.
Right, so I said a paper portion, I have the letter sheet, and so I have these two packets, and then it says I entered the thing, so he just needs me to put those.
Put those, whatever's highlighted.
Here, and send this.
And change that, change, you know, we can change the date, and that's it.
Um, what were you changing?
Because it's January one, two thousand twenty-one. This is last year's.
Oh, oh, I thought he, I thought he already did it.
Walter did this last year.
Did you email the office what he's needing?
Okay, I, I thought this was.
I could order you all of it, Brad and.
I mean, if there's a document that's in Word that could be changed.
I, well, that's what this is, this is spreadsheet, it's a sales spreadsheet.
If it's in Word, just email it to the office, and Jeff gives me the number, and I'll fill it out.
It's a, it's a spreadsheet, this is the one we've seen today.
That's the one you and I.
And then this one is.
I've never seen the other ones. That must be something Walter does on his own.
This is the revenue status by fund as of twelve thirty-one, so it shows the budget final, the revenue, the balance, the budget balance that's in the council. And then how much would we see year-to-date, or how much we spent year-to-date, which is what they're looking for. And that's a UAN report. That, that's what they're asking for, as item.
Item two, right?
Yeah.
I've ordered you.
Did you check with him again this morning to see if Walter did it over the weekend?
But I just spoke to him before we came in here.
So, Mark, did he do this?
And I forwarded the email to you.
Where, where did this piece of paper come from?
This is last year's what Walter filed.
He said he filled the stuff in now, so what, did he fill in on this, or did he fill?
He filled, I think, the other stuff.
So this is a, but this is all, I guess what I'm trying to think.
I've, I've entered the estimated proper tax revenues, so that's what he entered, estimated proper.
So I'm not going to change the date on it, right?
Well, we will up here, because it's January first, twenty twenty-one. This is a copy of last year's.
Also, all these numbers have been changed. Also, all these numbers have been changed.
Highlighted ones. Anything in yellow.
Has to be changed.
Has to be filled out.
Okay, all right, I'm with, I thought I was trying to fill it in once.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I'm with you now, I have it.
So just, why don't we just, you, you do that, send it to them. I forwarded you the emails.
Right, yeah.
If you need more.
We'll do that, I can do that.
And then we'll deal with if they need it as an official resolution, which I don't believe so.
Right. Cause I was looking at this one.
Well, your other item's gonna have to be an official resolution, but if they don't have it, you can do it at the first meeting in February.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send this to them. We'll, I'll get it tomorrow, or I'll fill this out and then I'll send it, we'll send it in to them and then they'll tell us.
If they need Walter to sign it, then he's not Walter to drive it out and ask him to sign it.
They don't need him to sign it, we can deal with that.
I was, I thought they already filled this out.
We're just gonna take it right off of this.
Yeah, I couldn't figure out what you were telling me how you could fill this out, too. You said 28, change the date. I was like, huh?
Yeah.
That's where I was like, I'm not confused anymore, no problem.
All right.
I'm good. Yep.
Everybody else get that?
Yep. This is yours, I believe.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Okay.
And I'll verify with Brad Cottrell who needs the other one, and it's already filled out, so I just change the dates to your February meeting and we'll prove it.
Okay.
But you have a copy to look at it, but I didn't see where that was at most.
All right, we'll move on to announcements and trustee comments. Mr. Johnson, anything?
There I am.
Ms. McKee?
I think we discussed it. Nope, I don't have any.
Okay, I got a couple of things. First, the coronavirus relief funds, I know they were looking into that after there was, I guess, a complaint regarding the, I guess I'll call it, still attempted bribe in the school district. They were looking into how the funds were spent. The individual said that he talked to you, wasn't today? And he probably got diverse information or, so I know they've been-
There was some that got sent over. I don't, I didn't send it, but they, I think.
Walter talked to him?
Walter talked to-
Cause I know they're-
They, they were looking for, they wanted a UNA, or UAN, what is it?
UAN.
UAN spreadsheet. But they didn't put the software in for the UNAs, but till after, we'd already spent a lot of money. So it wasn't this spreadsheet, so.
So the other questions on like the website cost and those were all addressed to them? Cause I know, I spoke to Gene.
He wanted the, he wanted the money that we paid out as a, as a, like, what do you call it? Hazard pay type thing. He wanted that money, he's interested in that, and he's interested in-
But those were addressed.
Where the money went to, which Walter, yeah, which Walter even sent him stuff on. And then there was the other matter of, he wanted something else. He wanted a whole spreadsheet of everything.
Yeah.
Cause I, I know-
And he said it was a UAN, he got a spreadsheet that was a UAN.
I know last week Walter said he would have all the stuff for him by the weekend, he did it. And did you address it?
Walter said he sent it, which I didn't know.
Maybe this week, after, after-
I talked to him today, he acted like he hadn't had it, so. But I talked to Walter, he goes, "I sent him all that this weekend," so it's all me.
Okay, he said. So you, you addressed Gene Barry, you talked to him today.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're complying, cause that was one of the things that was, it seemed to be ongoing that they're asking for information.
They're asking, they're asking for all that's the officer needs. So it's, it's hard for me, cause I don't know exactly what they're looking for, cause I don't, I don't T U A N and all.
Okay, and then, next thing, I have garage security review. I have no idea why, we, we have one Rob Levin's from Security Operations Systems from hometown of Paul. And why we have a second Mr. Fox for the garage. I can kind of guess why. However, at the time when Mr. Fox was trying to access the video, I had requested his public records, he couldn't access the system. He responded to me regarding passwords and logins of, he thinks or believes enlisted several possible passwords. I really think that the security number one should be under one company, one directive.
I'm fine with that.
And I think it, it should be reviewed, cause cameras, I, right now, I don't think are accessible, they're recording.
I don't know what's recording over there. I have a, that's a very good system over there. I'm with you, we get that, we've used Rob for how many years, Laura?
I've heard of things.
18 years that I've been-
We've used Rob, I've heard of things. Which, who's never left, but has always done a good job for us. Mr. Fox is no longer in that business, I, I think. So, so he's out of the business, he's done with that, he hasn't wanted more business from us, I don't think. So we might as well have Rob come over and transfer everything over underneath him, is what I would propose.
I think it needs to be reviewed, number one.
Yeah.
Because Mr. Fox even said he couldn't address any of the access issues, cause his employee isn't around anymore. It doesn't seem like he's capable of doing that. I honestly, I, I think-
Bring Rob in.
I would like to.
And, and have him, see what he can do with that. Can you call him or report it?
You gonna take the lead on it, or do you want to take the lead on it?
Oh, I can, I can call him, cause I know-
I don't mind calling, but you're gonna take the lead.
Can we do that with temporary appropriations right now, too? Do we have that in those?
Mike, can you do that with?
Or do we have to wait?
You're probably gonna have to wait.
Depends on Walter, that money is-
Cause Walter's not gonna be able to pay his bill.
Unless he does that third, or I don't know if we can even contract to expect.
Well, you could probably get Rob to come in and give you a quote on what it's gonna cost to get everything done by then.
There you go, that's what they asked for.
Get a quote and then by the time he does it all, you're gonna have permanent.
If you could do a little, a review and-
You can have him come in and do a quote with the review and then you'll have permanent progress.
Okay, that's good, that one.
Review and then he expresses, he recommends.
So Jack, you wanna take the lead on it tomorrow, or who do you want me to have meet when I get Rob?
Have you dealt with Rob before?
I've made one, he does the one. I haven't, I mean, I can do it, or you can do it, you have concerns.
I can do it, cause I've got no concerns.
And he might be able to answer some of your questions. So if you want to do it, that's fine, or I can do it, it doesn't matter, Mark, I'm gonna get it covered up with stuff, but.
All right, I'll take care of that. Is that?
That's good, yeah.
The Redwood lawsuit, apparently they need a contact. Mr. Carlisle was the previous contact. There's a, something happening tomorrow that he needs somebody to evaluate by phone, and I'm sure going forward. So I wanna see what the court's pleasure was and who that should be. You're, you might be a little more familiar with that since you're continuing here.
What are they looking for, you know?
They are looking, did you see the email?
I have already, I got thirty, so I'm-
Okay, there's gonna be a schedule conference tomorrow at 1:30. They're just looking for someone that they can discuss.
At 1:30? I should go to 1:30. It'll be a call, is it a call, is it a call?
She's not even sure she's gonna need you guys, it's just a, in case the judge wants to talk to someone at the township instead of the attorneys through a dorm. She just wants to point a contact.
Oh, your name's on it, good. It's at Laura's side, I was at Laura's.
That's right, definitely.
No. So, do you just wanna, in case they need someone?
Yes.
Oh.
But you know-
You guys might even be able to make it John Singleton, they just wanna point a contact to the township.
I thought it's all previous email that they need from trustee.
Well, then John could, John could reach out to one of you guys if he needs something approved. They think that Gus is gonna be able to answer the questions.
It's only need a question. You don't know what they're gonna be calling from, what number to get, oh, they're sent, other citizens.
If you look at the next email, there were two emails, and, and asking about trustee. I mean, I'm assuming you've been writing to any of your more familiar with this. So if you wanna handle that or get in touch with her, if there's some specific-
It came in about two o'clock.
Yeah, two oh nine.
I thought yesterday she sat and asked about trustee contact for it, because Carlisle was the-
And it came in about two o'clock. She had sent some stuff, I think, last week. But it said that Gus, with the pool, with the insurance, has already indicated he would be available, but generally the purpose of having a contact available is to convey a settlement offer, which you're not gonna be able to do without a board meeting anybody.
Right, but I'm saying, there's gonna, we just need a context, so do you want me to-
Yeah, she says, "I doubt that anything will occur, especially in the light of the recent ruling."
Ms. McKee, you good with that?
Yep, absolutely.
So you can contact.
Yeah, um-
If something comes out, let me know.
How should, how should we convey that information?
You could just email her back, or email, or your contact information, such.
I'll find this.
Just reply to her email.
Yeah, I'll reply to it.
You can keep that.
You don't need this back, sure.
Yeah.
That way, um, this is the 19, 2012. You're seeing how one-
1:30, okay.
Because my-
Okay.
They don't do it in voicemail, it's formed, if I don't have their number, so.
All right, so with that, Refugee Road Project, just want to update everybody, gonna be meeting with Pataqua and T I D on February 1st regarding the upgrade of the Refugee Road between Mink and Edna Parkway. So right now, it's a, they're looking at a shared project between Edna and Pataqua for that section. So just want to let you know.
Have you seen any of it?
I, I met with, to Vickens and Tony Lee, and then Bill Lozier, a little bit with T I D, discussing a little bit of the project, but this meeting is to kind of get it way out of the same page. There were discussions before with Trusty Carlisle regarding this, but then it kind of just fell aside.
So my personal opinion, if they can't show us the money, then we shouldn't be helping with that.
I, I'm concerned about where, they're, they're asking for split after other, other monies come in. The pool needed seven million, they're looking for 3.5 from Edna. What I wanna determine is, is it as much benefit to us as that for corporate marks up to the north? Possibly utilizing that more. And then also, I was told previously, there was a possible developer to the east of Ashley that may contribute that 3.5, but that's something trustee Carlisle was handling and is, no information whatsoever. I think I might have figured out who the developers and I'm trying to reach out to them.
Well, yeah, and I wanna say this, just so you know what I stand with it in the past, this has been a lot of, I've had talks with, too. We have, I've talked with, extra trustee Carlisle about it. My opinion is always that, that is the fastest section of the road. We didn't gain nothing from it by having it paved, except that it's a nice flat paved road. But we don't get any revenue off of that. Going farther east, event, the Parkway, that's still capacity, it's already all the way to Columbia. They have no plans for that, and you know what that was like there. Right?
Eventually, T I D, the, the Lozier's, again, the points of, we're gonna need to address the east, especially 310 and Refugee.
Right, and that's the next one. Then we start at Columbia to 310. And you think the trucks aren't gonna go, "Oh, I think I should turn right," and they're gonna go on in a Parkway. Then they're gonna go right over 310, go down. So now, you're talking almost the same amount of mileage, we gotta pay ourselves, but they did. So now, are we looking at $7 million on top of that, the fix for the Refugee Road, making a truck grab? They're not gonna help it at that point, 310?
Well, this would be the discussion.
All these things, all these things that we've, I've only had with them, this has been going on for a long time. They, their big concern was that they felt that they were led on in the project.
Okay.
Right, right, Carlisle's, uh, I would definitely, my statement, I was saying to the manager. And then I said, "Show me the money that we can get back from it. How are you gonna get it back laid out? I'm interested in not, I have no interest in it."
Well, I, I do that.
I want you to know that going in, so that you're not-
Well, I, I do get that feeling that-
I don't want you to lead them on anymore, but I'll check it out.
No, I'm open to hear everything, but like I said, we, we haven't had a serious discussion and that. It's not my decision, it's the court's decision.
But they've been led on for a period of time and I don't want to lead them on anymore, because that's what I'm-
And that's, that's what I'm hearing, that it was kind of one person's direction and-
Yeah, we get, let's give them an answer and, you know, they, they-
Cause they have different options that if we are involved or if we're not, cause I talked about roundabouts and different, because right now with a road, you can't handle the traffic and that. So 3.5 is a big ask.
Oh, yeah, it's huge, so.
So, and especially they just got the, the water and sewer that grant from the state, I think 4.3 million or something.
Well, there would be some money for that, too.
So, we'll, we'll say, but I-
About that, too.
I'm gonna, so I just want to let you guys know that it'll be in the meeting.
Yeah, that's not, what does that leave you for the word?
The first. February. So that, next thing, Road for, we lost Brandon. And Stevens out of two days, you know, forty percent of his time in the zoning office, probably gonna be increased with Mr. Singleton. President Medical League. I, I feel it's prudent to post, to fill that position. How we wanna fill it, I think, do we want someone that we can train with our C D L? You know, it, it might be a little bit cheaper, do we wanna bring somebody with some experience as C D L? That can handle roads, that can handle that.
How, how did plow, you know, this time with your, the people that you have in current career?
Move this lower, do you know, I think, uh-
I know we had Wes in the small truck in the neighborhoods, right?
Yeah. It would definitely been up in us if we had bigger, you know, not that extra big truck.
That extra big truck out there?
Just go, just go for a C D L by the 25th, you know, he's got a little more. This summer, yeah.
Oh, hopefully, yes.
Yeah.
Hopefully, yes.
I mean, cause right, right now, Ethan, Wes-
But here's, here's my point.
Steven.
If you got your, your survey coming through, we'll stay on that. If you guys are just basing all the number of people that are there, start with, it's easy, it's easy to add, but it's hard to take one away. And my point is that's go into our minimums things and then if we need to add, we add that one. Does that make sense?
Well, I'm just afraid that, I mean, like I said, we're down, almost a guy now, with Steven.
We need much even on snow, that's what we need, is much snow. You can go out, do some stuff, that, you wanna discuss something, you can come back and do this. Doesn't have to sit, they're out there plowing snow.
But during-
We don't need to sit in offices during that time.
But during a time of Singleton's out two weeks.
I'm saying still, if you sit in office, I'm pretty certain there are not, you'll sit in office and yell out.
You think we should hold off?
I would hold off just because of that, just, I mean, I, I, how you feel, that's what I would do, I would hold off just because of that.
Although, like, how you feel? I mean, it's, do you need someone, do you need?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I suppose we'll hold off until-
Oh, you wanna hold off?
No, that's what I would call it, hold off like my C D L, when all things shakes out.
And do you think we can hold off, or do you think?
We've had four guys for ever doing snow, Wes would pass it, he'd be great shape.
Does bike, so I, I guess we could see after the 25th.
I mean, worse than he, if he passed.
If, if after the 25th he doesn't, then I think we need to consider somebody.
Somebody, somebody can get some.
You wanna switch with?
Can you get your eye, I'll draw it. I got my C D L.
Okay, well, we could wait, we'll wait till the 25th, see, and then we could address it at the next meeting. Eric?
Al Johnson.
That's right.
I'm drug testing every day.
No, why?
Cause I need to draw on every quarter, six months.
Well, I'll do that.
Yes, of course, yeah, oh, yeah.
We'll do that, hold off, see what happens.
That's what I, that's what I suggest, all right.
So that, Parks, I know you're in charge of Parks and we're kind of middle of stuff. I did finally get a copy of the purchase agreement. I wanna give you that it's conditional on the one, the land, on the development there. So just wanna make sure that you had that. Trying to figure out what's going on with Parks and the other ones did not have. So apparently, if they don't get water and sewer, that deal for the landlord land reverts back to them. And it's a note. So I just wanted you to have that.
Mark, I need copies of those for public furniture class, please, tomorrow. I have a public furniture class for this purchase agreement, so I don't have them.
The purchase, oh.
I can talk to you after the meeting, but we do have an open public furniture class for this.
Okay. The audit, I don't know how much you've looked into that or not, after that last meeting, but I was in touch with Tara Weaver. Have you been talking to her?
I have not, she, I was reading your emails.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, apparently, they, they are just wrapping up the 2019 and 20 audit. There were numerous issues in there. Believe some of the documents were sent out the 31st to try to, to try to wrap that up. They, they did have some concerns and- I believe some of the documents were sent out the thirty-first to try to, to try to wrap that up, um, that they did have some concerns, and, um.
Did we all get dressed as an audit?
That, yeah.
Okay.
Well, as far as she, I think she's waiting, I think she's waiting for one, one item.
What page is that on, the thing to say, or? Right, here's the thing I got, that actually.
Oh, no, I, I, it's in an email, I, I've been, just trying to figure out what's going on with everything, but, so, that should be available soon, but if we can get a copy, if you have a copy, which was pretty close, I think.
This is a draft copy of the, uh.
Like electronic copy, it says?
Yes, it's.
With the changes?
Um, I've got, oh, with the changes, this is the, this is the actual one.
I think there was an email sent that table, it was up of Walter, return all that stuff from Tara, but I can reach out, make sure I have a copy of it for sure, and forward it to you.
Because there was, to close out, there were listed six things, and I think she was still waiting on the last one, something signed from Walter.
Walter and I sent a bunch of stuff back there at the end of December, I scanned it in for, so I can reach out to her and get a good email from her of what she would have sent, and get you that.
Okay, because today, she said that she, uh, off the top of her head, she believes she received everything back except number six.
Yeah.
So they're still, still waiting on, on something there, but they just want.
I got that.
You got that?
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, I mean, some of these things are like, they're just.
Well, I know.
It's something that I have access to, I can take care of getting them, I'll call.
Yeah, there's.
So what's the date on that draft that you have there?
That's what I'm looking for, it looks like October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Oh, that's right.
Well, I know Walter and John Carlisle signed it, which is at the end of the year, but.
That's, that's what came with it here, so I don't know, looking, I was looking for a time on this thing and date.
Okay.
But that was on the letter, the cover letter that came with it.
Well.
This is October twenty-sixth, too.
Well, Ms. McKee, I just want to let you know that that was there, so I don't know if we'd need a full, full fiscal.
Yeah, that's what you were saying.
It looks like they had a lot of questions, or digging into a lot of stuff, so maybe use that in your discretion, of, if we need to look for with everything, and I'm sure we'll probably have some issues for twenty twenty-one.
Right.
As I found out, like, we're not segregating the time of, uh, Steven between zoning and roads.
Yes, yeah, right.
So there's, there's some issues with that, and, uh, one of the issues, uh, I noticed that fiscal officer paid himself for January, beginning of January, typically, you pay after services.
Yeah.
So it should have been February, stuff like that, I think, will be brought up in the audit, so, that was that. Uh, cemetery, I, I can dress that in reports, you really didn't get anything, but Laura's got that, and that is all I've got, so.
You selected, normally, there's nothing with the cemetery unless someone needs buried, there's very little done with the cemetery.
I just want to make sure that she.
Yeah, I just want you, there wasn't a lot of reports done by Randy with cemetery, unless they need buried, there's not much going on with the cemetery.
Okay, and then fiscal officer report, did Wally, Walter.
That was a bit from the first meeting, and it got missed, they cut it off, normally, you have one mark.
All right. Uh, motion to pay bills.